Did anything come in on the Congress yet?
I don't know. I've been with you.
What?
Oh, he's looking at Twitter probably, so I don't know. All right. All right, going to call to order the October 16th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Ms. Michelle Beltrano.
Where's the flag?
We know where it was.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the real, honorable Christian stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding negotiations with the United Christian Center, to confer with our legal counsel regarding three cases of substantial exposure to litigation, and one case of approval to initiate or intervene in an action, and in all three cases, no action was taken, and to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with the West Sacramento Police Officers Association, and no action was taken. So with that, we'll move to item 1A, which is presentations on the public matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, we're precluded by state law from having a discussion or taking action on items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public hearing, a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item to please fill out one of the yellow cards. It's available at the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited in no more than three minutes. We take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular item. So, for example, if you're here to speak on item seven, as soon as the staff is done with their presentation on that item, we don't take any additional cards once the council's questions, discussions, and public testimony have begun. So if you have an intention to speak on one of the items, please be sure to fill out the card as soon as you can. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that indicates which item the council is currently considering. We know that for some folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety and awkwardness, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls, or even any applause or other demonstration, and we try to maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. So with that, we have one request to speak under item 1A, and it's by Mr. Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Wall, West Sacramento, for the record. Last time I shared with you the response letter from State Senator Steinberg regarding universal housing, and he was asking for input, and it was after that time. It made me think, I got to thinking about, well, what about existing housing? So I stated my thought on the reverse of the latest copies I shared with you, as well as many of the staff that were here to answer questions from the public today. And briefly, I think we should consider possibly financing wheelchair ramps or whatever to accommodate those with special needs with a loan that would be low interest and it would be repaid when the house is resold, because this group called Rebuilding Together, they require you to own your own place in order to get it fixed like that. But they have this policy that you have to be confined to a wheelchair to qualify. And, of course, we found out that it didn't necessarily have to be that way. I mean, if you've got a doctor's disorder and so forth, why? That should make enough sense, but this should help eliminate a potential financial problem. I don't know whether the governor, I don't think the governor would be opposed to it. I don't know what we'd call it, but I think it's worth considering, and it seemed to meet with strong approval from those who I shared this with earlier today. So I suggest that you and the other members of the city council also give serious thought to this, so that we can make existing homes almost as safe as universal design homes of the future would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, that's our only request to speak under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Kristof.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things that are probably of importance especially to the community, and that is the first week of November, we're going to have a workshop on flood protection preparedness. And for a number of people, it may be a pretty good idea. It could be an entrance, a negress, or to get out of the city or into the city, ingresses or regresses, what kind of kit you need, what kind of valuables, a list of things and that sort of thing. So it might be something that people are interested in, and like I said, it's the first week in November, so we're going to have something on that. Also, the West SacSafka is sort of changing its motto, so to spink. We're going to move, everybody should be getting one of these in the mail, and we're going to be trying to move our brand, so to speak. And it's the City of West Sacramento and West Sacramento Flood Protect instead of West SacSafka. Sometimes West SacSafka gets confused with Safka across the river and all these other things. So we're trying to slowly but surely make some changes there. And so we thought that this would be something that is pretty informative as far as the public is concerned, and at the same time, could make some changes that are really sort of beneficial down the road. A number of people, as everybody knows, we have these different segments that we're trying to complete for flood protection. Right now, we're in the segment B, C, D, along the Sacramento River and along from, I'm going to say, from beyond the port, all the way to the southern borders of our city, about five and a half miles. And that's been, there's a number of people that are affected because there are some homes out there, and the various proposals that have been coming in to us at West Sacramento Flood Project are going to be affected. The levee needs to be moved, or there needs to be a slurry wall that goes in, there needs to be setback levee or something. There needs to be some kind of work done in these locations in this area. And so we've been working with the property owners, and we've been working a long time. And it's really getting sort of frustrating. And the reason is, is because you have to have the EIR, Environmental Impact Report, you have to have that completed before you can have discussions, meaningful discussions, with the property owners that are out there. And we're trying to get that as fast as we possibly can. Needless to say, sequester came in first of the year, slowed things down. Then we had to shut down the government. And I think tonight, everybody has, from a congressional perspective, have all put their hats on, and they're going to pass something that gets the government moving again, the federal government. And so we're hoping that we can get this EIR completed as quickly as we possibly can, so that we can make offers to the, we couldn't even make offers to these people. And, you know, they're trying to either relocate, they've got to sell their properties in order to relocate someplace else, and it's really a mess. And it's a very big inconvenience for the people out there. But we're working as hard as we possibly can to get the documentation done, and so we can eventually get something moving and going forward. So those were the major issues that were discussed at our meeting last Thursday. And so, anyway, just trying to get information to the community and to the council as far as what's actually going on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kristof. Other communications? Mr. Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, and I'll say thanks, Bill, because you know what? That is a tremendous amount of work that you're doing with West Safka. I know the property owners are very nervous about it, and so I know you've been working diligently with a lot of the longtime residents, so thanks for your work on that. The Yolo County Transportation District met earlier this week. Just a few things to note. We received a copy of a letter that was sent by the executive director to the Sacramento Entertainment Complex, Sports and Entertainment Complex staff, largely identifying some of the environmental concerns that we will have, we have, relative to the transportation routes that are currently being used by YCTD, and when they cross into Sacramento downtowns, obviously, we're concerned about what impact that will have for the bus service that we provide to the Yolo County residents. So we got a copy of that letter. We also received an update to the bike business plan. For those who may not recall, the bike share program is moving forward, and so actually starting to come together pretty nicely, and our downtown district will certainly be connected to the larger downtown region if this bike share program comes together. So it's one more opportunity for folks to get around as an alternative to using their cars. And then also, we received an update on some minor modifications to some of the bus routes. There'll be a public meeting here at City Hall on October 29th to update folks on some of the proposed changes. And then also, the board approved the appointment of Martha Guerrero as the City of West Sacramento's representative on the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Transportation District. So that was it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Viegas. And I'd simply note that Mayor Potembe Ledesma is out of town this evening on a work assignment for his regular job. So we'll proceed to item 1C, which is appointments to boards and commissions we haven't on this evening. That brings us to the consent agenda, which is items 2, 3, and 4. Item 3 has been pulled prior to the agenda's publication. Any of the items that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment?
I have a question on 2.
All right. Item 2, then, is consideration of approval of annual child signature program contracts with Washington Unified School District and Yolo County Office of Education in the city. Mr. Kristof.
2, Carol?
Yes.
Okay, Carol, is Measure K generating $100,000? I mean, it seems like there's additional monies that want to go into this childcare signature program.
Measure K only contributes $100,000 to the overall program. The majority of the money comes from First Five California and First Five Yolo. That $100,000 has already been budgeted and was approved in the two-year budget.
Okay, so what's?
So we're not asking for an additional appropriation. These are just the contracts to the school district and to the Office of Education for the program that was already approved and budgeted by the council.
Okay, so we gave our $100,000 sometime ago.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then, is there motion on the consent agenda? Okay, I'm going to have to move by Mr. Viegas and seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye in a close during non-motion carries. Consent agenda is adopted. Item 5 is a public hearing and consideration of Resolution 13-91 regarding proposed amendments to the wireless telecommunications facilities policy. Mr. Tilly?
Yeah, Associate Planner Kathy Allen will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldon and members of the council. City's wireless policy was adopted in 1997, and it has not been changed since that time. Since 1997, wireless technology has changed greatly, as has society's demand for both wireless and data services. There have also been various changes to both state and federal law in regards to regulation of cellular facilities. In 2011, staff brought changes to the policy to the planning commission, which voted to recommend said changes to the council. And in October 2011, staff presented the changes to the policy to the council in a workshop format. The council was receptive to the changes as presented, but requested additional analysis regarding aesthetic impacts from placing wireless facilities within the urban core waterfront areas of the city. After the workshop, staff paused efforts to update the policy due to budgetary constraints and other priorities. As emergency preparedness is council's strategic plan priority, staff has restarted their efforts to update the policy and has essentially picked up where we left off on working on it. To meet the request of the council, staff has researched what current technologies were available to both provide enhanced cellular coverage and provide the aesthetics which the council was looking for. Staff discovered that many cities now utilize a system called distribute antenna services, more commonly known as microcells, and these are especially used in urban cities, urban settings. The microcells can co-locate up to six carriers on one pole, and this type of antenna is typically mounted atop light poles or utility poles and extend only a few feet above the tops of the poles. And just for your information, the City of Davis is currently installing 20 of these microcells within their own urban core. The policy as presented tonight to you is basically the same as what was presented in 2011, with the following amendments made to address the comments of the council. We've added a new definition to reflect the addition of microcells to the policy. In order to promote the development of microcells within the city, staff is proposing to add them to a list of wireless facilities requiring only zoning administrator approval, and staff is proposing a hierarchy of preferred wireless facilities to provide for enhanced aesthetics and encourage co-locations of existing facilities. From most desirable to least, the hierarchy consists of microcells, roof-mounted facilities, facade-mounted facilities, and freestanding towers. Should a freestanding tower be proposed, the applicant will need to provide evidence that no other type of alternative is either practical or technologically feasible. This concludes staff's presentation. Myself and Mr. Tilly are here to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Are there questions for staff at this time? Mr. Johansson.
Kathy, on the microcells, is the photos that have been attached to the council agenda show the cells fairly innocuous, blending in with the light poles? Is that typically what these things look like? Because there's really no definition other than microcell. I mean, can they be these elaborate things that still create some visual impairment?
There is actually quite a bit of flexibility as to what they look like. These were the three examples of the types of microcells that Davis is installing. These were actually their three test poles that they put throughout the community so to give the community a chance to look at them and comment them. But they actually can be designed in many ways with different architectural treatments to hide them. These were just the ones that were close enough that we could take pictures of them to give you a general idea of what can be done with them.
Right, so is there ever a review of, you know, how it actually looks, the particular device they're using, or a place where we could say, no, you're going to have to try to find something that's more aesthetically pleasing?
Yeah, well, these applications will still require discretionary review by the city, so at that point in time, that's when that would occur.
Great.
These are representational of the microcell concept, but as Kathy mentioned, there certainly could be, you know, other styles, but these are generally the concept where they would be mounted on top of a streetlight or other similar, you know, fashion.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, actually, the same question, because the definition is, it seems more sort of open-ended descriptive, but it didn't read like regulatory language. Like, it could be this, but it could be any number of things, as opposed to things like the definition of antenna is very specific. But the definition of what a microcell is, it wasn't clear to me, or if I was an applicant in advance, I wouldn't know whether I was qualified for zoning administrator review or not. It's like, well, they're lower, and they could be on light structure, they could be on a light pole or something else, or they could not be. They could be in the public right-of-way, they could not be. There's no, like, real clarity about what these, what this really is. And so, both for the applicant, but for others in, you know, in the general vicinity, if they want to know if somebody's proposing to build one of these facilities, is that going to be subject to zoning administrator approval only? Or will I know if I'm a resident or a business owner in that block, will I be able to tell that, okay, I don't need to worry, because that's going to go to the, you know, the commission for review, there'll be some public review process? And so that's the challenge with the very open-ended definition, that's just like two antennas together that are a little lower than normal?
Yeah, I think the principal, you know, difference in this type of application, you know, versus what we're more, you know, more introduced to seeing, is that this actually would be, rather than all, everything being on one pole, then that's spread out and networked on a larger geographic basis. This type of application, there actually are several of them that are networked together on a much smaller, you know, in a neighborhood level. You may have several of these on one street or in one neighborhood that work together on a much smaller geographic, you know, basis, rather than the more traditional high cell towers that may, you know, cover, you know, a mile radius, you know, around the facility. We see these as having a potential application only in urban areas, but, you know, could very well be an application that could be subordinated even in our, you know, existing, you know, more suburban residential, you know, neighborhoods where a more traditional facility, you know, could be not appropriate or not acceptable for that neighborhood. But we certainly can work on refining, you know, this definition. But the concept was to try to get this in there, you know, the distributed antenna system, because we do see this as being something that will be more commonly applied, especially as, you know, neighborhoods, you know, infill and, you know, the towers aren't, you know, meaningful anymore.
Yeah, the concept, I'm completely, I'm 100% with you on the concept. It's just that the definition leaves enough ambiguity that it's not, it's not really, so much an issue for the applicant, I guess, because the applicant can just call you up and say, is this a zoning administrator one or not? Let me fax you over a picture. But the issue is more for anyone else that might, you know, is protected by our review procedures to know that it's going to be subject to some public process or not. Like, if I just take an existing cellphone tower, cut off the bottom of it, so it's lower, and I network with another big gigantic cellphone tower with a million spires on it, is that qualify under this definition? It sounds like it could. That's not your intent at all, but, right? So, but that's why, I'm just suggesting that the definition could use a little bit more clarity to be useful to the, to members of the public who might want to be aware. Because I think you're exactly right, creating this option and creating incentives for folks to move in this direction makes a lot of sense. But for that to work, the, you know, we'll have to, neighbors of these facilities are going to have to have the same level of enthusiasm, and so we want to make sure that the definition protects their interests too.
Okay, so let's open the public hearing then on this item. We have no requests to speak on it, but because this is a statutory public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on item 5? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return it back to the council for any further questions or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the item, including the feedback to tighten up the definition that we adopt Resolution 13-91 approving the amendments to the wireless telecommunication facility policy.
Second. Assistant Attorney?
If you, if you take that action, then the policy will go into effect as written.
I see.
What you could do is direct, is do that and direct staff to come back to you at some point in the future, modifying that definition, or you could hold off on acting tonight and just give staff direction and have it brought back.
The time sensitivity.
There are some reasons why it would be a good idea to adopt an updated policy. The policy is substantially out of compliance, probably, with state and federal law, at this point being from 1997. So, I don't know, there, I won't say there's an urgent need, but I will say that sooner rather than later would be better.
So if we adopted, if we adopted tonight and simply direct staff to bring back a consent item at some future date?
Yes.
That tightens up this definition, that would work as well?
I guess that's not working. I'll attempt to come up with something that might tighten it up that you can consider. A microcell is a wireless communication antenna, meaning the individual panel or whip that is attached to a mount, attached or mounted to a pole, building, or structure that serves a very limited area, such as a mall, a transit hub, a localized neighborhood. Those are some of the different definitions that other ordinances have used. So we can say that it's, you know, a limited whip antenna of a, we can even put a maximum height on it if you want, not to exceed. So something along that nature, does that tighten it? Is that kind of where you want it to go?
I think that's the right direction, but if we don't have to write it here with us non-experts on the definition, but I think that the point is really to deal, I mean, you're approaching it from the technology, from what the tower does, which is useful, but I think we're more interested, at least I'm more interested in what is the, what is the aesthetic impact, as opposed to, does it, you know, does it serve a 300-foot radius or a three-mile radius? And if that's the best way to get to that, then that works too. But I think, rather than try to write it here, if we, if we were to approve your proposal this evening, and then, and it doesn't have to come back in two weeks or anything, but if, you know, if we work towards a tighter definition, that could, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just trying to help if you wanted to try and move this tonight.
Yes, no, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Johansson, oh, did you move this? Mr. Viegas moved, and Mr. Johansson moved adoption of the resolution with that specific direction. So no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed hearing, none, that motion carries. Item 6 is a public hearing and first reading of ordinance 13-5 and ordinance 13-6 regarding various amendments to the zoning ordinance. Senior Planner Sandra White will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldon and members of the city council. The city council conducted a workshop on the annual update to the zoning ordinance on October 2nd. The proposed amendments include minor amendments to the existing sections of the zoning ordinance as well as significant changes involving front yard paving restrictions for single-family homes, fencing standards for barbed wire and electric fences, changes to the temporary advertising sign standards, new sign standards for temporary off-site directional signs for agriculturally related activities, and new operating standards for temporary seasonal sales. The proposed changes to the temporary advertising sign regulations were the only changes that generated comment and direction from the city council at that workshop. The number, the location, the type of signage, temporary signage used for temporary advertising purposes are not currently regulated under the current provisions, and since the proposed amendments would revise, would reverse this and restrict temporary advertising signs to two banner signs per business attached to the building, the council recommended that staff inform businesses of these proposed changes. Last week, the Economic Development Department electronically notified approximately 2,300 businesses and planning staff a mail leaflet to approximately 500 businesses that are located along the major retail corridors, which included Sacramento Avenue, West Capitol Avenue, Harbor Boulevard, and Jefferson Boulevard. Staff has only received a handful of phone calls thus far from businesses seeking a clarification of the proposed changes. We are recommending that the city council conduct a public hearing, waive the first reading, and read by title and number only ordinance 13-5 and ordinance 13-6, and inform the audience that the second reading and adoption of these ordinances is scheduled for November 6, 2013. That concludes my presentation. We are available to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Are there questions, staff at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on item 6. We have one request to speak on this item, on Michael, there's a whole bunch of letters on top of each other.
Michael Pate.
Pate?
Michael Pate, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Pate, I'm sorry.
Electric guard dog, Columbia, South Carolina. I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, that's our only request to speak on this item, so we will close the public hearing, return to the council. Further questions, discussion, or motion? Mr. Kristof.
I would move that we waive first reading and read by title and number of ordinance only, ordinance number 13-5, ordinance number 13-6. Ordinance is amending the zoning ordinance and inform the audience that there's a second reading of ordinance 13-5 and 13-6, scheduled for November 6.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kristof and seconded by Mr. Viegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and opposed, hearing none, motion carries, and pursuant to the council's direction, we inform the audience that the second reading and adoption is scheduled for November 6. All right, item 7 is request to speak on this item, on Michael, there's a whole bunch
All right, item seven is request for consideration of Resolution 13-95, establishing an open data framework, and request for consideration of a contract with Socrata to initiate the city's open data initiative.
Good evening, Mayor Cabalton, members of the city council. Tonight, I'm hoping to acquaint the city council with the concept of open data and the recommended actions needed to implement an open data program here at the city. What is open data? Open data is simply defined as any information collected or owned by government should be made freely available for use, reuse, and redistribution by the public. Open data takes existing city data and establishes a framework that makes that information more accessible to the public, essentially removing many of the barriers that currently prohibit our citizens from viewing and consuming city data. Staff is recommending we contract with Socrata, a leader in the open data community, to establish an online web portal that delivers city data to our citizens and development community. Examples of open data in action include Yelp, the online standard for finding restaurants, now integrates San Francisco restaurant health inspection scores into their application. Cook County, Illinois, look at the Cook system, allows its citizens to actually look at the county's budget and how the money is being spent. Childcaredesk.com, a finalist in the New York City Big Apps 2013 Hackathon, uses open data published by the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to help parents find quality childcare centers. In addition to providing open data, innovative cities also adopt civic data standards and an open data policy, both of which we're recommending this evening. Why do we need civic data standards? We live in a standards-based world. We experience standards every time we plug a device into a wall outlet. Yet, standards that help define civic or government data is a relatively new concept. Civic data standards, like other recognized standards, are developed by a consortium of interested parties that hope to find the common language for the data we collect. When adopted, these standards make the information we collect and maintain more valuable to our citizens and businesses by providing the information in an open, defined, standard, and uniform format. These standards help make city data easier to use, interpret, and share. A major example of civic data standard is in use by millions of people today, and that's the general transit fee specification. This specification provides a standard format for the public transit schedule and associated information in both a static and real-time format. So every time you use an online mapping system such as Google Maps to find public transportation to your desired destination, remember that is only possible because of the city, the civic data standard. So why do we need an open data policy? Open data and civic data standards only work when they become a priority. The resolution and draft administration policy included with tonight's agenda report are just the first steps into integrating these concepts into our culture. I envision the city's data of open data policy to be a living document, one that changes to encourage and promote the adoption of open data and standards, and not a document that limits or discourages data from being published. As pointed out by many open data advocates, most public record systems are a system of reactive disclosure, meaning that a question has to be asked by the public before we, as government, provide an answer. This initiative I'm talking about tonight flips this concept. We have the opportunity to create a proactive disclosure system, one that publishes data with no barriers or bureaucracy. In conclusion, by approving the recommended actions listed in the agenda report, West Sacramento has the unique opportunity to be a leader in our region with a progressive open data policy, and by providing our citizens an advanced open data web portal. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Then this item flows from the council's strategic plan, where we had identified, we've identified civic innovation and the application of technology to improve the quality, delivery effectiveness, and transparency of our services to the community, and this is, it is an important step in that regard, in part because that civic innovation is not, as it's occurring around the country in all kinds of places, and you've listed just a couple of really the thousands of innovations that have occurred that have big and small impacts, they're not being done by government. It's not as though each city is starting to write all these new applications, or it is that they are making the data available for developers, entrepreneurs, coding developers, not residential building developers, but to make these on their own. And so that only works if the data is available, but also, as you say, only works if the standards are common across agencies. And so there's a standard around housing inspection data that is emerging now, that will allow for that information to be more publicly available, but usable by the public, not just giving the public access to long, long, endless spreadsheets of data, but to allow people to build the kind of applications, whether it's on their phone, if you're looking to rent a place and you want to know what are the last inspections look like, that kind of information is really useful to the public, but there's no way currently for anyone to harness it. And so making that available and creating a place in the region where those developers and entrepreneurs can come forward and help to create an innovation economy here in West Sacramento was part of the reason for that, being part of the council's strategic plan. Another element of that was the potential of working with Code for America, which is the national, sort of the national leader in this regard, and we're still working in that direction, but this is essential for that work to proceed. The Code for America, the national summit is happening today, and tomorrow in San Francisco, and actually, all eyes right now at that summit are on the adoption of this resolution. We're not, we're by far not the first one in the country to consider doing this. There are many that have moved forward with this and that have caused the creation of a lot of these applications of various kinds for the public, and have created lots of new companies and other things, and lots of economic growth as well. But in our own region, the city of Sacramento has been considering this for a little while, and they're moving forward in the same direction, and the city of Davis wants to do the same thing, but we would be the first to have adopted the formal policy and to begin, beginning to work on it. So I think this is a good approach to do it. The notion of having an internal staff group to manage that is important, because it's not easy, right? Our day-to-day work in each of the departments still takes precedence, but it is important to have buy-in from each of the departments as it goes forward. And then working with the firm that you've identified, as opposed to trying to create a whole new infrastructure inside city government, I think makes a lot of sense as an efficiency question. So the one thing I would suggest is that if the council does approve this, that we, I know Mr. Johansson and I have both been working in this sector, Mr. Johansson is the only one of the five of us, when Mr. Ledesma's here, who's ever actually coded applications, and he's been, he was doing it during the closed session a little bit. I mean, he's in this sector for real, and I've been doing a lot of the national innovation work, and so I think that we'd like to help as sort of an ad hoc subcommittee of the council to help guide this forward and help maximize both its effectiveness within city government, but also its usefulness to the public and its ability to help leverage the creation of new value in the public and in the private and non-private sectors as well. So, Mr. Johansson, and then Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I think, so on Socrata, so I mean, the agreement, the services they're going to be purchasing, it looks like it's basically a 12-month contract.
It is.
And so there's a package that they'll provide in terms of creating the web portals, and they'll create the APIs, it looks like up to six custom APIs. So at the end of the service contract, do we own those APIs?
You know, that is a good question. I have to look into that for you. I do not have the answer at the moment.
Yeah, because one of the things in, you know, open government is to have open source, so you're not tied to specific vendors. And although I totally approve going in this direction at this time, it's just something we need to be careful of, particularly when you're starting to look at outside people trying to code into the APIs, you're going to make sure there's no licensing implications or no costs associated with that. And the other thing, too, is on the data that you're going to get, it really is raw data, unadulterated raw data. So for example, how many pencils the city bought last year? I don't think there's a need to get in that level of detail, but I understand, Texas, you can do that, and how many pencils they bought last month on a web portal, whatever that's worth. But you know what that ends up doing is, you create an industry of people that look at that data, it can manipulate it, and present it in different formats, which is really good value, this type of thing. So in terms of other open government issues, you know, of course, there's the, I think we're using Granius for our Access West Sacramento?
Comcade.
Okay. Well, there's another company called Granius, because basically, it's, what they do is they, you have, it's a web portal for council meetings, and its ability to, you know, send text into council meetings, you know, we haven't really talked about that, but there's all kinds of ways that you can open the process up, make it easier for people to access our government, make it easier for businesses to interact, but I think this is a good start. You know, we'll see what we can do, and I'm glad we're taking the lead on this.
On the API issue, I wonder, since we, if you don't have that detail tonight, and it is an important one, that maybe if we were to adopt the framework and the policy this evening and hold on the contract until, you can clarify that? And maybe bring the contract back as a consent item at the next meeting, and it'll give Mr. Johansson a chance to take another look at it, but also to answer that very specific question on the API.
Yeah, I think it'd be considered a work for hire, you know, in copyright terminology, than anything we purchase, it's ours for whatever use.
Given the cost of the contract not being exceptionally high, would that be something we could authorize the city manager to sign if we prove that either those APIs would belong to us at the end of the contract to move this project forward? Or would you like to have me come back and discuss that at a later date? Is that the core issue, the API ownership?
Yeah, I think, you know, it's whatever the work price, because basically, it's a 12-year contract, right? If we decide it's not working, then that's the problem with single-source software, is you can't use it anymore, so you have to gear up again, and people have relied on it, and so there's a little of a letdown when you...
One thing on that APIs, and I may get the name of the company wrong, but there's the Open Foundry API solution where you can develop those APIs online that allow companies to get into your data. I know they're using that to develop these custom APIs. Obviously, they have their APIs to access all the data in the system, but we're given six custom APIs for specific types of data. So I would like to believe, but I'll verify, that if they are customized using that open, that we would have the rights to take those with us at the end of the contract, but I will verify.
Yeah, so basically, at the end of the contract, you could still, you may not have servicing, but you'd still have the software to use.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, Rob, can you go through a little bit as far as policing issues? I mean, are, I mean, there's undoubtedly data that people can extract that talk about what's happening within the police department, or whatever it may be. I mean, some of that is very sensitive information. How do they, or how do you expect those issues to get resolved so that we have the protections of our police department, fire department, whatever issues that may be out there?
Are we talking in the case of the potential producing sensitive information that the public may view, or are we talking about, you know, just by looking at the data, we find that there's specific crimes or things of that nature happening in the city?
Mainly if there's been a crime committed and people want information, or whatever it is on it, sometimes that is so sensitive that it really shouldn't get out there.
You know, in most situations like this, that data is nothing new to deliver to the public. The only difference is, is that we are just putting it in a raw format. So a lot of this data has already been vetted through the attorneys, through things of that nature, and other cities that produce this data have already gone through that process. In any case, while I believe that the data should be open by default, but there are limitations by law that need to be adhered to to make sure that we're not producing sensitive information to the public. And I believe that's where the open data advisory group comes in, to also look at the information we have and make sure that there aren't any applicable reasons why that should not be delivered or used by the public.
Well, I certainly think that in the media today, we hear a lot about NSA, or we hear a lot about the CIA, spying on American people, and all these kinds of things. I mean, I just don't want this to be a source of information so that people can do that. You know, people are, these hackers are breaking into unbelievably secure systems and everything else, and I wouldn't want them to have an opportunity to get some sensitive information or sensitive data.
So along that lines, the data portal and the information we have on the backend, like through our dispatch and through the police RMS system, they're completely separate products. The data portal itself is just a subset of data that's been approved out of those systems for public consumption. There is no link that the public would be able to have to get from this data portal to our inside data. So there is a separation of the two that accounts for that security, so you should not be worried about the breaches that would happen if it was a direct link. It's not direct. It is always processed over here, maintained, and then submitted over here, and it's just a subset of that data.
Okay, because as soon as Oscar's picture comes on a wanted poster, I'm going to hold you to this.
Okay.
Again, again.
All right, any further discussion? All right, so Mr. Viegas?
No, I don't engage in the techie part of it, I just think the open, transparent element of the policy makes good sense. I mean, I think it's going down the right path. Thank you, Robert. It's good work, it's a lot of work.
All right, so then I guess the motion would be the item with the contingency that we, with respect to the ownership of the APIs after, and then...
He stepped out, Marty didn't hear that, I think he stepped out, and Robert made that.
Oh, but Rob does.
Oh, that's true.
Okay, so Mr. Johansson moves?
Yes.
No, I'll second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, thanks, Rob. Item eight is presentation and discussion regarding amendments to the book of fees for fire department and code enforcement division regulatory activities, products and services. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. So I'll begin the opening of this item this evening. These two fee programs are before you tonight in a workshop format. The proposal for these amendments came out of the budget process that we just completed this last July, where we identified a need to look at these fees since they had not have been adjusted for several years. The two fee programs are different in their philosophies. The code enforcement fee program, or the code enforcement operations, are primarily funded by the general fund, with only historically about 15% of the fees, or 15% coming from fees to cover the operations. And the fire fee program is operated more in an enterprise fund manner, in which the fees from the permits actually self-fund the entire program. And so we are looking for direction tonight on both of these programs, and I'll now move into the code enforcement specific, providing an overview, and then after that, I will turn that over to Brian Johnson for the more specifics on the fire. So the proposal for code enforcement is minimal at this time. We're looking to change several of the rates that are currently flat rates for, say, re-inspections, hearings, things of that nature, from that to an hourly rate, not necessarily adjusting the dollar amounts, but just going from a flat rate to an hourly rate. This will achieve two things. It will achieve a better cost recovery and get closer to the 15% that has been historically projected. It will also provide more usable data. Currently, we can't, we don't really have data from past to determine exactly how long we're spending on each type of case or each activity on a case, so moving to an hourly will help us with that. In the staff report, you'll note that we have a couple of tables in there. We've shown comparison to other regions, other agencies who have code enforcement and what they charge. You'll note that many of them charge a flat rate that is considerably higher than what we charge. In talking to them, they have developed those flat rates based on hourly data that they did have, and so they've come up with a sort of a standardized number of hours for each type of inspection and/or process in the case. So we'd be looking to come back to you in a year or two, possibly through the budget process, and revisit once we have some of this hourly data, and determine whether or not additional adjustments need to be made, whether we want to go to a flat, go back to a flat rate, but maybe one that's more representative of actual time spent on the cases and the degree of the cases. So we're also looking tonight for direction from you on the philosophy, on whether or not you want to try to achieve more cost recovery through the fees and less reliance on the general fund. We're not proposing to change any, the philosophy on the notice of violation. That, we currently do not charge anything on that. That's the first 30 days where the person is given a notice, and they're given that first 30 days to comply voluntarily without any penalties. And then also, if you have feedback on the hourly rate, it would be going to $65 an hour as opposed to $65 flat rate. as opposed to $65 flat rate. As noted in the staff report, the cost for a code enforcement officer per hour is approximately $81. So whether or not you wanted, when we come back to you, to stay with $65 an hour, or possibly raise that to capture more of a code enforcement officer's cost. So that concludes my part of the presentation, and I'm happy to pause here and answer any questions directly related to code enforcement, or we can move on to Mr. Johnson.
Why don't we stick with this topic first? So, Mr. Vegas?
Yeah, just a question, Charlie. And so I know you asked, you're looking for feedback, potentially to come back in terms of the philosophy or approach, whether it's hourly or maybe the complexity. So are you talking about in the example where, say, carnivals and fairs are being proposed to have the same rate as, say, explosives and fuel dispensing facilities and hazardous materials? I mean, is that the comparison? Because otherwise, I mean, if you didn't inject some relative rate, you're basically painting all these with the same brush, right? I mean, is that, is that the distinction that you're looking for, or am I missing that?
No, mine is on the code enforcement.
Fire permit?
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Sorry. I gotta, sorry.
Combining the two into one does make it a little more complicated.
Okay, I'll defer.
That was sounding like a fascinating code enforcement question.
Yes, I was thinking.
It might be fascinating code enforcement.
I was waiting for the answer.
The fire guys, Ryan's ready to jump up and answer it.
So your feedback from the chamber was, are you sure you don't, we shouldn't be recovering more of the cost? And we also received a separate communication from the rental housing association for the region, expressing support for the approach of trying to recover more of our costs. Because it is, I mean, it is, I mean, we, 13% cost recovery. So if, you know, if I have a neighbor who is flagrantly violating the laws of the city, in addition to having to deal with the noise, or the smell, or the, you know, the dan animals in the front yard, whatever the code enforcement violation is, I'm also having to pay for that through subsidizing their code enforcement violation process. And that's not, that's not fair to the taxpayers. So to me, the 13% is way too low, and I don't know how Sacramento County achieves 100% cost recovery, but I certainly think we owe the taxpayers of the city to not ask them to subsidize that process. I've always supported the low cost or the zero cost at the front end, because we get code enforcement complaints from people, often as sort of neighbor battles and that sort of thing. And so you want to, you want to fairly low cost at the beginning while it's still figuring it out. But once you're getting through the rest of this process and you get to the point where the violation's confirmed, and you're at reinspection, and you're having the hearings and all of that, those costs really ought to be borne by the folks who are causing the problems and not by the general taxpayer. So I appreciate the direction this is headed. For me, I think turning the knob even more to get, not to 100%, I don't think that's realistic, but getting to a higher level of cost recovery and reducing the amount of subsidy that the taxpayers of the community have to provide to folks who are, in this case, pretty flagrantly violating the law repeatedly. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I would agree. I think the, we should be looking at recovery of costs here, particularly in code enforcement. You know, folks that do get citations, there's plenty of opportunity to correct whatever error it is. So, you know, when you do actually have something that becomes more serious, it's really, you have a question of fault at that point. So, you know, sometimes there's economic circumstances. I know that code enforcement's working at some point with the folks, but we do need to try at least recover the costs we're putting into this.
Kristoff?
Yeah, I concur, but at the same time, I mean, I think I can give you quite a few examples of people that had a code enforcement issue, that really don't have the wherewithal to fix the issue, or to fix the problem. And, you know, is there something that we can look at as far as an appeal process for those folks? I mean, there's been some issues on Charles Street with, I mean, they're just down-to-earth, salty, really good folks, but they just really didn't have the money to put into their house and their structure that would satisfy all of the different code enforcement violations or issues that they had. Is there some way in which we can at least take a look at those kinds of examples?
Sure. We're not proposing to change the appeal process, so they still have the ability to appeal, to go to the hearing, before the hearing officer, and present their hardship. In some cases, I know, we have tried to connect residents or business owners with nonprofit organizations that do construction and can try to help remedy the situation at a much lower cost. Typically, if they are making an effort, we will try to hold off on imposing the fees. So we do try to work with them within our authority. So I, and that has been working. We've used that a couple of times, and I think you've heard of a few cases, especially in the north areas. So I wouldn't propose changing any of that.
Okay. Good. All right, on to fire.
So with that, then, I'm hearing that I might want to bring back, when we do come back, possibly upping the hourly rate to, say, closer to the 80, the actual cost of an officer. And that would get closer to the cost recovery. You're still, that's not going to be 100%, but I think will be somewhere between 15 and 50%.
Progress. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you, Charlie. And regards to fire, since its inception in the early 1990s, many changes have affected the way the hazardous materials program was initially created, now currently operates. Numerous building and fire code cycles, increasing the number of regulations we govern, enforce, and educate, and the expansive city growth that we've seen have both increased the program's workload. With this growth and change, the current model for providing services to the community requires revision. As the fire department has not increased fees for 10 years, a study was conducted to determine appropriateness of our fee methodology, structure, and sustainability. In the study, it was discovered that the fire department is not recovering sufficient costs to operate the program, and our current fee structure is the lowest by far in both the Sacramento and Yolo County regions. We currently charge $100 on the average for an operational permit, with the highest in the region charging $437. By utilizing the service fee approved by council earlier this year and our authority to recover costs for the California Health and Safety Code, the fire department has created a new structure and fee model based on the cost to conduct inspections. After creating and applying this new structure, our fees now place second from the bottom in the study we recently conducted. The new permit fee, which represents about 85% of the operational permits we issue, is now $230, with each subsequent permit only $85. And where that makes a difference was, historically, the fee was $100, and for every operation you had, there was an additional $100. The proposed fee business impact for permits and for the overall program is an increase of 46% or $70,000. Regards to the hazmat storage fees, they have also been restructured to more appropriately reflect the cost to manage. Six new tiers have been created to reflect the number of materials stored, as opposed to the unit quantity of materials as of current. Each tier reflects the time necessary to evaluate the materials for its properties, its compatibility for storage with other materials, review and update of hazardous materials management plans, and the training necessary to mitigate and respond to emergency incidents. The proposed fee business impact for hazardous materials is an overall program increase of 3% or $6,000. As each of these restructured fees proposes an increase, per the city book of city imposts policy and a request from the Chamber of Commerce, any business incurring a fee increase will incur the fee gradually over a period of time. We've initially agreed to the request for a four-year implementation for the businesses with the largest impact, but we need to finish conducting an internal impact study to assure that the extended implementation will not negatively infect or impact our revenue. We are now also proposing an entirely new program fee for the building fire final. Historically, the building finals have been included, have not included a fee from the fire department, with the cost being subsidized by other funds. By creating this fee, builders will assume the full financial responsibility for the construction projects. We have initially proposed a four-year, or a four-tiered fee based on project valuation, but it has been commented that this structure does not directly relate to actual costs incurred by the city. We have since developed a justification for this and have directly related the costs, city costs, to each valuation that's been proposed. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
All right, Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, Brian, for the presentation. So in terms of, so maybe going back to where I started, I think I heard you say you've embedded some rate structures that capture some of the cost. I don't know if it was driven on that, but you've got some rate structures in here, and I'm just trying to understand. So in terms of what actually takes place functionally when you're doing these kinds of inspections for, as I said, carnivals and fairs versus the hazardous materials, I'm just trying to reconcile how the two shake out to be the same proposed rates.
As far as the same rate? Well, if you look down the list, there's different rates throughout, and it takes into account travel time, pre-file review, the inspection itself, post-inspection, follow-up, completion, filing. All of those are included in that number.
The complexity of it, I mean, is that part of the, maybe I'm just reading too much into it in terms of the complexity, or is that not factored in as part of, or is that not weighted?
Well, some are. If you look farther down, like I said, there's, you'll see, under the general operational permits, they've got, we assume that if you have one operation, it's a fairly small operation. And as your operation increases, you tend to have additional operations that would need permitting, and that's what the increase and addition of that extra fee includes that extra time necessary for that. But just a base general inspection that you can do in a period of time is typically two hours, and that's what's associated at that 230.
Ah, okay. So as you're saying that, I'm reading further down, I'm seeing that. Okay, very good. That makes sense. Helpful, thanks.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Brian, just quickly, so it looks, I mean, you commented in your report that the small businesses are going to be hit the hardest with this increase, and it's like 131% increase. I mean, isn't there a procedural way where you're not making one trip, going back, making another trip? I mean, to do them kind of in a batch and tell these folks, look, you're going to get your, you're going to have a delay in getting your permit, but it's going to be less expensive. I don't know if you've looked at ways to maybe, particularly small businesses, a more maybe efficient way to do that, so you might be able to, it's not just, it's the same trip for every single business.
Well, and the way we structured is, unfortunately, it is the same for everybody. You know, the cost that it takes to do the file review, the inspection to get there, whether you're making, you know, a million widgets over here, or you're selling one down the street, that initial cost to do that is the same. And it's unfortunate that is the way, but that's how the numbers represent. I don't know how to better explain.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking that, you know, one trip out, you're not making double trips back, you know, so some cost savings are, because obviously, when you're on the road, you guys are charging, which is what you should be doing.
And you know, part of that we take in consideration, I wish it was as easy as we pull the file, we review it, we go out, we do the inspection, we come back, and we file it, but we go out and nobody's there. Or they, we need to have permission to make entry. They don't give it to us at that trip. So we go back, we set an appointment. So you go back and forth. Some files are more lengthy than others, take more time to do. Some inspections take longer for whatever the dynamics of it. So, you know, that two hours isn't just a basic in and out, it takes into account every other nuance with those inspections that go with it.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, people who aren't complying, they're not really helping you do your job, there's your cost issue. But folks that, for example, make an appointment, you're there, boom, you're done. You know, so you're not having to go back and forth, and those folks may have some benefit, some economic benefit. So, just a thought. I just think, you know, we're trying to encourage small business here, and, you know, 130% is gonna, it's gonna be a lot for people.
Well, you know, and it's, this is, it's been 10 years since we increased fees, so you're going to see a significant impact now. But, you know, over those 10 years, we're not asking, you know, for that money we didn't make, what we could have made, you know, per our costs. Unfortunately, we had to offset some of that cost with other revenue, other permit revenue, but we're just trying to make it right now, and that's why we're rolling in with the four-year implementation, if it works out on paper, to kind of minimize that impact upfront.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Mr. Kristof?
On some of the really large projects, as far as some of the inspections that you do, the port comes to mind. And is there a separate fee, or is there something in this whole fee permit business impact? Is there a way that, because sometimes the port, they will bring in some pretty hazardous materials that really need your attention.
That's correct.
And so that, is that a time and, is that the amount of time you spend there, or the trip, or is that built into the fees?
Well, again, as the, as the dynamics change with the larger business, there's more permits, which allow us more time to do. Like, the port, for example, and let's say, you know, Agram's and the Shells and the Buckeyes, there's a new fee called the hazardous material terminal fee. Because they're so large, and it takes so much effort to conduct the inspection, pre and post, that's why there's a more significant fee for those.
So there is for the ammonia plant?
Correct.
And there definitely would be for Buckeye. I mean, they've got some issues even going on now. Are you monitoring them also at the same time, or is that just EPA?
No, no, no. They're fall within the fire code, under our responsibility, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
On the final inspection fee, so that we're, this is all projects, it's only, this only covers projects to which we're sending you out to do inspection.
That's correct.
So if I do a water heater replacement in my garage that requires a permit, it's a, but you don't come out for that?
It's within discretion, yes. It won't be every project, correct.
Okay. And we don't expect to see more fire inspections occurring as a result of this bonanza?
Not that everybody wouldn't want to see me, but.
Oh, you do them all personally? All right.
Of course, of course. Just once, though.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All right, so this is a briefing only, and this item will be back for first reading on November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item nine is consideration of the final 2013 homeless update and workshop on the draft homeless action plan.
As Louise is approaching the dais, Mr. Mayor and council members, is Louise still there? Yes, here she is. We have heard this before, and we're real pleased. We had, as I mentioned in our last meeting, it's been a very collaborative process with the different departments, as well as council members participating in meetings. And Louise, you're on your way up here, right? This isn't my item, but we do want to commend the stakeholders and the staff and our partners on working with us, particularly on that 24-point draft action plan that we'll get input tonight, and then come back and have final approval after that input on November 6th. I did want to mention, and Mayor, I don't know if you, I think Carol gave you a list, would you like to introduce those folks in the audience who have worked with us? Would you like me to do that?
Yeah, and I should say Supervisor McGowan, who represents most of West Sacramento and on the Yolo County Board of Supervisors, and the senior leadership of the county, the county executive Patrick Blacklock, met with us earlier this week around coordination of services, but also around some of the issues that we've talked about in these last several council sessions and hearings around doing things differently and measuring our success differently than simply taking action, right, or doing things, or delivering, not just about the delivering services, but are we changing lives? And are we, not just connecting people to services, but are the services used? I mean, so really rethinking how we hold ourselves accountable and what we're, what we are shooting to accomplish by collaboration, because we're dealing with such a difficult challenge. And as we've talked about many times before, there are very few places, if any, that have solved this. So if we're going to do it, it's going to take something more than just us collaborating in ways that we always have. And the city manager was very insistent around the appropriate level of services being provided directly here in West Sacramento and not simply in Woodland, and that message was well-received, and Supervisor McGowan underscored it as well, and willingness to partner on some resource applications at this. We also discussed working, bringing.
We also, I think, discussed working, bringing our A-team to the table on this, on this issue, and I know in, with us this evening is Joan Parnell, the new director of employment and social services, who just, who just started, and we've, I hope the county exec has already let her know that we've asked, we're asking her and the chief of police and others on our team to work together around coordination and services and all of that, but also around really thinking about, thinking about and approaching this challenge in fundamentally different and innovative ways, and bringing some different strategies to the table. And I think we express that we are ready to, we're ready to work and get this done. We are not constrained by the typical politics of this issue, and I know it's frustrating for some folks who would like us to be, just move, you know, move everybody out of town, and other folks have said, just, you know, embrace everyone, and a hug and some services will solve it, that we're not in either of those camps, but we want to solve this challenge, and we want our best thinking, we want to look at best practices from other parts of the country, other countries. We really want innovative solutions while we are deploying the best of what we already do. And so Supervisor McGowan, who could not be here tonight, he really wanted to be, he watched our last session in total, fully committed himself and his colleagues on the board to the county being a key partner in that, and so Joan Parnell, the director, is going to be a key player in that, in that regard. Also, we're joined by Martha Guerrero, who is one of our local representatives at the county's local mental health board, who has been working really hard on this, on this challenge as well, and is a bridge, she's also, she's on the local mental health board for the county, she's also on our planning commission for the city, and so providing some bridge and some oomph and some connections with some funding sources, so she's here. And then we're joined by our esteemed county sheriff, Ed Prieto, welcome, and by our district attorney, who is also resident of West Sacramento, Jeff Freisig, welcome. So the county, I think, is by, both through those discussions, through tonight, symbolically with the caliber of leadership that they, that they brought to this session, and the work that's been occurring, I think they're, they're sending a clear signal that they are prepared to work on, they are doing a lot in this arena already, but that they're prepared to work in new and more, in more intensive ways to try to address the challenge in ways that blend our law enforcement and police powers and land use responsibilities at the city with the corollary responsibilities that the county has, also in law enforcement and in social services and other related areas. Supervisor McGowan in particular wanted us to make sure that the council was aware, fully aware of the level of commitment that the county is bringing to the table.
Okay, so Louise is prepared to go over the updated baseline data for the homeless plan, and then present the 20, now 24-point action plan for your consideration and bring it back on November 6th.
As the city manager indicated, we have the final version of the homeless update that incorporates comments that we heard from the council and from residents that were asking the city council to take a look at and hopefully accept. I should make one note that we did receive a call late today from Communicare, sometimes known as JH Jones Clinic. Some of their services were not identified correctly in there, so they did ask that the final document include, reflect that they do provide some mental health for mild and moderate persons with mental illness, mild and moderate mental illness, and they also provide some healthcare services to persons that are uninsured in, here in West Sacramento. Were there any questions or comments on the study, the homeless update? Okay. So the action plan is based on the guiding principles that were proposed in the study. This was developed through months of outreach, community discussion, and research on homeless issues, both in West Sacramento and best practices across the nation. The action plan starts out with four guiding principles. Yeah, if you could turn that on. And those are respect for personal safety, dignity, and the property rights of our neighborhood residents, businesses, and homeless residents. We're on screen two. One more. Respect, sustainable improvements in quality of life for families and individuals experiencing homelessness, accountability for all members of the community, cooperation and coordination between the city, the county, homeless residents, business community, neighborhood residents, and our partners across the river in Sacramento City and County. The action plan is designed to forge a pathway leading to a cooperative, sustainable approach addressing the impacts of homelessness, an approach that balances compassionate assistance to those in need with an expectation of lawful behavior and a commitment to preserving our public safety. It's not expected in the plan that the city will become a homeless service provider. There are other agencies that have far more expertise, funding, and staffing for these actions. However, the city can act as a catalyst to bring together the community, the funding agencies, the service providers, for the betterment of all residents, including those who are homelessness, those are homeless. Accountability is one of the key cornerstones in the action plan, and one thing the city has been doing in the past is police enforcement to hold people accountable. This has achieved some success in certain areas, but police department personnel have described it sometimes as a balloon effect, where when you squeeze down on one spot, it pops up somewhere else. Our goal with this plan is not to continue squeezing the balloon, or to squeeze it harder, or to squeeze it more often, but to let the air out of the balloon, to change that, the way that homelessness is, affects the community and the way that we affect homelessness. The action plan will include steps that make fragile neighborhoods less attractive to homeless persons, provide prevention services to keep people from becoming homeless in the first place, and create programs to address the needs of chronically homeless persons suffering from disabilities, mental illness, or substance abuse problems. It will link families in crisis and homeless persons with permanent housing while providing the case management and support needed for them to successfully sustain housing. First goal is to enhance public safety. This is the keystone for the entire plan. We can do this by strengthening our ability to analyze data and thereby identify problems and solutions, expand high visible, high visibility policing, which is already occurring in targeted neighborhoods, coordinate with Yolo County to streamline processing of arrestees, and to focus on rehabilitation-oriented programs such as neighborhood court. Yolo County is working on a, is doing a pilot mental health court, and we would like to see that expanded to West Sacramento, so that we have a local court system that does not jam up the county, the superior court, but provides rehabilitation-type sentences rather than jail time. And jail would be used in those types of programs. Jail is usually normally just kind of a last resort for people who are unable to comply. We can also make city and privately-owned properties less attractive for illegal camping. Secondly, the plan improves communication and coordination between the city, the county, and other stakeholders. A forum is proposed to distribute information and foster collaboration and learning between service providers. Homeless providers will work with managers of affordable housing to create permanent housing options for formerly homeless clients. And the police department and economic development division staff are currently working with our business community to reduce attractive nuisance-type activities, and will continue to encourage business leaders to become a force for change, and the plan proposes to continue this partnership. It also establishes the need for a homeless coordinator position dedicated to West Sacramento. The third goal is to expand resources available to combat homelessness. Staff has met with Yolo County, as the city manager mentioned, to discuss submitting applications for Mental Health Services funding and Mental Health Wellness Act funding, specifically to target those who are chronically homeless in West Sacramento. And the plan promotes targeting Yolo County funding earmarked for, specifically for mental health, mobile outreach, to the needs of the chronically homeless in West Sacramento. We can explore methods to facilitate placing West Sacramento homeless into currently unused treatment beds in Sacramento County, in Woodland, in Davis, in addition to attempting to create new beds in West Sacramento, but we can use what's already there, too. And it's clear that to accomplish all, everything in this plan, we'll need to seek additional private and grant funding. For example, one area of concern is the loss of stimulus funding that was designated for prevention assistance for families at risk of homelessness. So those, that's, that's a need that we're going to have to work on. Finally, the plan provides an outline for developing more effective delivery systems for the provision of homeless services. Fragile neighborhoods would benefit from locating homeless services into non-residential areas, and we can collaborate with service providers and residents to create good neighbor guidelines and shelter management guidelines that everyone can agree to. This will go a long ways towards ensuring that quality services are provided in a manner that is acceptable to our neighbors. The update study clearly indicated that West Sacramento needs intensive outreach targeted specifically to the needs of chronically homeless persons living along the river and in motels along West Capitol Avenue. This outreach should improve access to mental health and substance abuse treatment to improve self-sufficiency and prepare these permanent, these persons for permanent housing solutions. The action plan concludes with a chart, Appendix A, that proposes a timeline for completion and indicates agencies or city departments proposed as lead agencies for each task, and also performance measures for each task. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any other questions for staff at this time? All right, thanks, Louise. We're going to take public comment then on item nine. We have just two requests to speak on this item. Actually, are any of our county partners, any of the wish to say anything? Okay, terrific. Okay, so we have two requests to speak on this item. The first is Christine Abey.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, council staff, and county representatives from other departments. I'm very pleased with the report. I actually read the 52 pages, and I wanted to thank Louise very much. I appreciate all the work and the time you've put into this report. You've identified, actually, Mayor, a lot of the issues that I had pointed out in the report that I felt was specific enough to, and important enough to reiterate, but you've addressed them beautifully. And also, having the members from the county, from the other departments here, present, supporting that they're going to move forward with the efforts to make sure that this action plan is implemented. I don't need to go through my four pages of notes. One of the issues I did want to address is the, there is indication, obviously, that there is affordable housing that's still needed for, to help transition a lot of the homeless people into moving forward and getting their lives together. I wanted to make a comment about when locating these properties, if there could be a disparity in equal distribution when you're considering location of transitional housing and affordable housing, if, if one could take note that there are already a lot of existing affordable housing and transitional housing concentrated in one area that is directly around Sixth Avenue, Sixth Street, excuse me, and the Roger Christian Center. And when looking at affordable housing and building these properties and transitional housing, if we could look at the broader scope and the broader area and make sure that we're not impacting one particular area, if I'm making sense. I love the idea of the neighborhood court. I've actually worked in a county agency where a drug court model was implemented, and it was very effective and saved a lot of county dollars, where individuals were actually brought before the magistrate, and their, their charge, if it be called a charge of violating, you know, violation of camping ordinance, let's say, for example, they would be told by the magistrate that they would have to make an effort to either find appropriate housing, get a job, get into a program, et cetera, et cetera, and give them a timeframe to do that. If not, they would have to come back before the magistrate and, and report whether they've done that or not. Just the act of accountability, and I think having somebody with some sort of authority ask them to go forward and meet some sort of expectation, and to know that they're coming back before the same magistrate, I found that that was very effective in the agency that I'd worked for in the past, and I love the idea that we're, that we may be going with that. I believe that there's already a model that's sort of loosely in place in Yolo County from what I read in the report. I wanted to support that, that we definitely look into implementing that. And also the coordinator position. I think there is a lot, a lot in this report, a lot of expectation, and we definitely need the, the use of a coordinator, an experienced coordinator, to make sure that there's oversight. Thank you so much. I'm very happy with the report.
Thank you. And Sally Madhavan?
And so just to echo the last speaker's sentiments, I couldn't be more pleased to hear this conversation out in the public arena. I'm a lifelong West Sacramento resident. I'm also a NAMI Yolo member, and a mother of a 23-year-old young man affected by schizophrenia. So this is just, my heart is just pounding, I'm just thrilled. I wanted to just come and loan my support, working with Martha, to say that it's unfortunate, and I have only the deepest sympathies for the police department, but a lot of times, I think what isn't known is that there really are no other choices. Forty percent of the people affected by severe and chronic mental illness have an additional condition also known as agnosognosia, which means they're not able to reflect on their own behavior. They don't know that they're ill. So no amount of concrete evidence that you put in front of that person is going to allow them to understand that they are thinking differently than the people around them. This is where situations become critical and dangerous. A lot of times, families are put in the position of having to call the police. It's unfortunate. I have a long history of police in my family, three Yolo County sheriffs in my family, and so we have this discussion all the time, that, you know, I sympathize with the police department, they didn't sign up for this, they're not trained to deal with this issue, yet that's the position that families are put in. Services are not available for people, are, are available for what they call the walking wounded, people with depression, people who could walk into a facility and say, I think I need help. But for those people who are affected by this additional condition called agnosognosia, that's not the case. And when, for example, my son is 6'1", 190 pounds, he's fabulously brilliant, and he experiences long periods of lucidity. So in every way, he is the boy that I raised him to be, and if I allowed him to hurt me or hurt himself during those periods when he's paranoid and symptomatic, he would never forgive himself, and that would just further separate him from any kind of recovery that he could experience. And recovery is possible. There's a lot of exciting things happening right now in science. So, well, again, while I sympathize with the police department having to come and help me with this problem when neither of us are trained mental health workers, that is the position that we're put in, that is the system that is in place. So anything that the city can do, any kind of grants that we could go after to have maybe some crises, just some more mental health services on this side of the causeway, to make things easier on the police department, to make things easier on families who are seeking services, would just be so appreciated and appreciated. And I also just wanted to let you know that the crisis intervention training is happening again, and so I just wanted to leave a flyer for each of the board members here tonight, and also my card, and I would invite you to check out the NAMI Yolo website, just to see what the services are that we provide. We're an education entity, and so, thank you.
All right, appreciate it. All right, those are the only requests we have to speak on item nine, so we'll return it back to the council. Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, maybe just a question. Louise, so the homeless, the coordinator, when would that person be hired? Because there's a number of steps, responsibilities, or is, is this going to be a fairly quick hire or appointment, or how is that going to work?
Well, we haven't quite ironed all that out yet. Well, we haven't quite ironed all that out yet. There's going to be some discussions as to whether that would be a city responsibility, a county responsibility, a, maybe one of the service providers. So provided the council encourages to do that tonight, we'll, we'll be looking into that.
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely encourage that because I think, you know, one of the problems is, you know, people shouldn't have 20 places to call for issues regarding the homeless, I think probably two, a homeless coordinator and the police, if it's more of a law enforcement issue. And that, when you're trying to, you know, on the report itself, you did a great job at marshaling with all the resources that are available. I mean, that's really, we didn't really have it. We had it in bits and pieces here and there, so that in and of itself is, is a good thing. But when you're looking at implementation, of course, it's, you know, you have to appoint a person to do this, to make sure that someone's guiding us through, so I'm really happy that there's a coordinator that positioned in here. The, so I mean, just in, in general, I think we talked about this last time this was up, it's, you know, I don't think there's any intent here to eliminate homelessness or desire to do that, or maybe desire, but that's not gonna happen. It's really to reduce the impact of homelessness on the residents and also try and help the folks we can. So I think this is a great report. I think it's not just a report, but a really good action plan. I think it's, it's been vetted by the community at length. There seems to be community buy-in now, which is gonna be great, because this is something that's going to take a sustained effort. This is not something that we're going to have one meeting and, you know, we're done with the, the action plan. It's going to be something that, as long as, I would imagine, West Sacramento's a city, we're gonna be dealing with this issue. So, you know, I'm, I'm glad that there's, you know, that there's a recognition that we have an issue here in West Sacramento, and we're really making an effort to, you know, take care of our issue and not push it off to anyone else. And I also like to commend the district attorney, too, for the neighborhood court. I think that's, you know, I had a chance to visit Lowe's and Fish's, and, and I think they're, you know, it's, it's the same issue. I mean, you can't ticket your way out of this, you can't arrest your way out of this because you have people, 80% or 85% are dysfunctional anyway because of drug alcohol addiction or mental health issues. So you, I think it's good to try and instill a sense of responsibility, and I think that does it, you know, particularly if they go through the program, the record's cleaned, and, and they're off and running. And, you know, during that time, the main thing is to get them into services and get them assessed and, and try to help the folks, because once you got them, you can actually do that assessment. So I think it's a great report. Thank you very much for the time and effort you and other staff have put into this. It's a great job.
Mr. Iagus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would echo that without repeating any of it. The, the question I have, first of all, thank you very much for the performance measures. I, I certainly harped on that quite a bit the last few meetings, and I think you've, at least in bullet form, as Appendix B, some, some performance measures that, that makes a lot, make a lot of sense. The next thing I was looking at, or looking for, I guess, and it says it's referenced in, on page two of the staff report, towards the bottom under, under services, the timelines for completion of the actions, action items. Looks like there's supposed to be an Appendix B of the action plan. I didn't see any of that.
Appendix A. It's in the chart, Appendix A. So the timelines is the first column.
Oh, got it. Sorry, sorry.
For each individual item.
Jumped ahead. So, um...
And so they're, they're in the chart, they're pretty much ordered in kind of chronologically.
Okay. So this, I, I mean, my sense is, and we, and I think the mayor alluded to it earlier, there's a lot, there's, there's a lot of thought, a lot of conversation, a lot of ideas, a lot of starts and stops in terms of how to, how to move an item like this so, so difficult moving forward. And I think you've done a good job laying out, I think, at least at the outset, all the key components that we need to be cognizant of as we move forward. I think you've done, I mean, I, I don't have any questions or concerns at this point, and I suspect that assuming we move forward with this as proposed, we can begin to, to jump into some of the work in earnest, so makes, makes good sense.
Thank you.
Kristoff?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things, Louise. Number one, I think the coordinator position, it's gonna really have to be vetted in a budgetary process that the city goes, especially if it's gonna be city funds. You know, I mean, is, is a homeless coordinator something that I would support over another fireman, or another policeman, or a couple of people in public works, whatever it is? You know, I'd like to be able to at least have that, that contact and that dialogue and, and see what's, what's going on. I think you did a really good job on the report. I think it's absolutely marvelous. It, it's a very good report, and it, and it talks about all these flowing kinds of things and all these good things that can happen and this and that, but the reality is, it's not gonna happen. I mean, we've gotta be braced for that. Homeless has been an issue for a number of communities for a number of years, and we can put all the flowery phrases and everything we want in an action plan, and we could try to achieve it, and we should try to achieve it. We really should. We should give it the effort. But at the same time, I think we really do need to be realistic, and we need to make sure that the folks understand out there that you're gonna get panhandled at Safeway, or you're gonna get panhandled down West Capitol Avenue, you're gonna see that person pushing a cart wherever it is, it's, even if we implemented all of it, you're gonna still see it. We, we should try to eliminate it. I agree with that. But at the same time, you, we just need to be pretty straightforward with, with the folks out there and tell them that we'll work at it, we'll work hard, but at the same time, you know, we're not gonna be able to get rid of it all. It's, it's gonna happen. And so, anyway, but those were just the comments that I had, and I was a little concerned about the homeless coordinator's position without going through our own budget. So I need to make sure that we prioritize that in a way, and the council will do, will go through our priority, and we'll see what happens.
And, and that's one thing we're considering when we decide where that position resides, should that, should that even be a city position, or should it be?
Absolutely.
Another agency?
Okay. All right, well, I, I actually didn't think we'd be at a point where all, the, at least five of the last eight people I've heard say they, they thought this was a great outcome, would all be saying it at the same meeting. So congratulations to the, to Louise and to the rest of the, the team who've distilled this and shepherded this throughout the, throughout the process. And for all the residents and service providers and stakeholders and faith-based, faith community folks, everybody who's put up with all of this in order to get to this point, I think it is a good, it is a good step. And so I certainly plan on voting tonight on the, accepting the update. We're not voting tonight on the plan, the action plan. The action plan is for presentation only. So I did want to give some feedback about that specifically in that context, because I, I, I actually agree with everything that's been said, including Mr. Kristoff's warning that it may not happen. And so I, I think, absent anything else, this plan doesn't have the sort of accountability, self-executing components that will require that it occurs. This is, and, and it looks right. There's not something that's wrong about how it's written, but I've, I've been at this long enough to, to, to see, you know, plans not get executed in the way that they need to. And for me, I think we had this conversation when we were talking with the county folks, and I kind of walked around the table, and folks said, "Well, I'm all in, I'm all in, I'm all in." And I have to say, I'm all in on this as a package. I'm not all in on just the concept and that if all we've done in three years from now is half of it, that that's good enough. It's not. Either, either we're doing this entire strategy, or we don't, or for me, we don't do it at all. There is a long list of impossible challenges that the, that are, within our city, that we don't, we don't tackle, because we, they're not solvable. And I'm not gonna detail them now, but there's, if, 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 every day we're getting, I'm getting an email from somebody or a Facebook post or a phone call saying, you know, "You guys need to solve this," and you look at it and say, "That's not something, that costs $100 million, we can't do that. We, that's just unavailable." Or there's some federal law that prevents it. So we don't tackle that. And in some respects, this issue has been like that, just because of the sheer enormity and complexity and the, the road of, of, you know, sort of dead mayor's bodies along the highways of the country who've tried to tackle this, who've declared, "I'm gonna be the mayor that ends homelessness. I'm gonna be the city manager that ends homelessness." And we don't have, and nobody got time for that. We've got, I mean, if, if, if we, if we have a limited amount of resources, money, time, and attention, then we have to be devoting them to those challenges that we at least have a fighting chance of winning. You know, whether that's recreating our downtown, or, or helping our schools get better, or fixing the levees, whatever those are, we, we only tackle challenges that are gigantic and enormous and almost impossible, but not the impossible ones. And for this issue, I don't want, we're, we cannot do it just because it'll make us feel better, feel better about ourselves. Like, oh, well, we tried. At least we did something. That's not good enough, because that, in doing something, we are not doing something else in the city. And it's, and, and partly gets to Mr. Kristoff's point about the coordinator. I mean, focusing this much attention on trying to, trying to beat this challenge means focusing less attention on something else. We don't just invent the resources and the people. And so if we're going to do it, and I support doing it, but if we're going to do it, we need to do it in the maximum extent possible, because even then, we're likely to fail, but at least we'll have a fighting chance. Right? So if we, but if we only do some of it, we will not. And I say that in part because I know there's a lot of folks in the, primarily in the service and the faith community that, that really like the service part of this, and I do, too. But it's, it does not stand alone. And when we come back and say, as part of this plan, we are going to make it, we, we do not, we're, once we've targeted these others, these others, once we connect people to services, as we're doing that, we are simultaneously going to make it more inconvenient, more challenging, more difficult to do illegal things, including camping on public property, including violating other people's personal space in their, in their homes. I mean, that, we are going to make it, an objective here is not to make it easier to be homeless. Our, our objective is to, is to make it easier to get out of homelessness and to reduce the impact of homelessness on otherwise law-abiding citizens in our community. And those are twin objectives, and they have to be accomplished together, and, and they must be. But it's not, we will not simply be measuring our success five years out from now as, how much service did we provide? If we have not reduced the impact of homelessness on the public in this community, then we will have failed. And, and, and I say that in part because our job is not service delivery. We're getting into the, into, into connecting on service delivery because it is essential to the city's mission of, of public, of protecting public safety, the police powers of this, of the city. But the delivery of, of mental health services and the social services, that is a county function, right? That, that's not, that isn't, we, we do. And if, even if they, if they don't do it to the extent that we would like, or in the way that we would like, we don't get to go in and just do it ourselves. We're just like, we don't operate schools when we get upset at the school district 'cause graduation starts at 6:30 instead of 7:00. We can't have our own graduation. There are, there are, I mean, we have a constellation of separation of responsibilities and powers. Ours is to protect the public, the health and safety of the public in our, in our community. We have determined that we can only do that by being stronger partners and aides to the county, to the nonprofit civic sector, to faith-based organizations, and to others to solve the underlying problem. But make no mistake, that is not, that is not an announcement by city government that we are now going to make ourselves responsible for the deliver, uh, delivery of health and human services writ large. We, we don't have that capacity. It's part of a coordinated strategy together around reducing homelessness and reducing simultaneously the impact of it. So I, just in terms of the, some of the specific pieces for, as we, as this comes back to us, as the, the principles, I think, are, are the sensible ones. The respect principle, we, we specifically reference respect for residents, business owners, and homeless residents, but there's a lot of other folks that are affected, and I think we need to be clear. We don't, we tend not to think of West Sacramento as like a destination for visitors and tourists, but we are, and we aspire to be in so, in certain places. So folks who are, who are visiting our city are, also deserve that respect. Folks who work here but don't own a business deserve that respect, too. So that umbrella, as we think about who, who we are protecting, needs to be thought of as, in a more broad sense than simply residents, owners, and, and homeless residents themselves. The accountability piece is one of those sentences that, I get it, but it, to me, it's a signal of where, where we're a little shy about saying how much we believe in enforcing the law. And so the, the, I, I know when we say all residents, including the homeless, I, I mean the homeless principally in this, in this case, and I don't want to, in this, in the action plan, soften that in some particular way. That's the problem that we're facing with violations of the law and public accountability. We need to call that out specifically. We are tackling that problem, and not subsume it as it's a small part of a, of a larger issue. It is the issue in terms of the impacts, and, and we need to be very clear to everybody that's participating in this effort, that that is one of the objectives and one of the underlying motivations for the work that we're doing. Because ultimately, for the resident who, who wakes up with somebody in their yard, or with something stolen off their porch, or some, something else has happened that's compromised her safety, the crime is the crime. All of the reasons that we're able to trace back for why that occurred, sure, they, they matter in the judicial system around what the level of accountability is, but for that individual, it makes no difference. Makes no difference that it was because of substance abuse, or mental health, or veteran status, or anything else. What matters is that she no longer feels safe in her own home. All right? And we, that is our responsibility to deal with in a very direct way. So not to simply wipe it away, wipe away any accountability for it by saying, well, there are all these reasons for it. Yes, there are all those reasons for it, and that matters in terms of whether there's, whether there's an actual arrest made, whether there's a prosecution, whether there's, whether there are consequences. But for us, in terms of treating that, that is still a crime that has, that that resident, that that business owner, that visitor, that employee deserves to be protected from. And so we, we, we need to, throughout this, this plan, insist on that, that while we are being compassionate about the individual, we're not losing sight of our responsibility to, to, to protect the public safety for, for itself. And I, and I think in, in a lot of ways, that the, the, the action plan simply needs thematically to make that clearer, because I think for everybody coming to the table that we, that, it's important that we understand that. As we, as we get towards the end of the action plan with the item 20, which is assist the Broadwood Christian Center to relocate all delivery of basic necessities, and so on and so forth, that, that section, I think, we, there's, there's another area of this, of the reports that talk about alternatives. And I do think we, we ought to have, be having the conversation about additional providers of, of services and basic necessities that, that can do that work in our community. And so we shouldn't use the Broadwood Christian Center as the only, as the only means for, for meeting those, those needs. I think to some extent, because we haven't had the level of coordinated service delivery in our community up to this point, the Broadwood Christian Center has sort of, by default, has been the, the principal, if not the exclusive provider, in, in some of these dimensions. But that doesn't have to be the case. There can be others that, that do that, and I think as a city, we can be, you know, we can help in the development of those alternatives. But also to be clear that as, if there's a relocation, that we're not providing mobile services, that, that the point is not to make it more convenient to live in an illegal camp. That's, that isn't the point, and, and we're, we're trying to deal with, with providing those services in ways that will then provide a gateway and a linkage to the kinds of mental health services and other social services and employment services and housing and transitional housing that are, that are critical. And we don't accomplish that when we enable the impacts that are occurring in areas that are illegal. And the last thing, and we talked about this in the session with the county, was to not allow ourselves to be, to deal with this in a statistical sense, which we often have, where we said, "Well, we wanna target, you know, let's deal with, 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 you know, folks who, who have been, mental, mental, mental illness issues." And then somebody will say, "Well, but they're not. Everybody that's homeless is mentally ill, and so that's not gonna solve the problem." And we'll say, "Well, well, let's, let's provide services to veterans." "Well, you know, there's a lot of homeless people who aren't veterans, so that's not gonna solve the problem." And all that, that just becomes massively disabling. No, no one thing is gonna solve the problem. There's no one characterization of the whole population. But if, if we're able to sort of diagnose this very surgically and say, "For, for this 1% of the homeless population, we're doing this strategy, and if that reduces the incidence of homelessness by 1%, then let's bank that 100, that's, that 1%, and let's, let's go on to the next 1%." We don't need a solu, we don't need solutions that solve everything all at once, or that pretend to. If we can be much more specific in what we're trying to accomplish with actual people who are homeless, and what their, what, what the challenges that they're, that they face in the services they, they could get access to, I think we'll get, we'll, we'll have a lot greater success than, than a strategy that we think will be generic and, and service everybody. And I think to some extent, that's the reason why Mr. Johansson's point around the need for something like a coordinator to be a one-stop shop, whether it's that person or not, I, I, I'm not suggesting, but there needs to be, you know, paying attention to these issues and to the opportunities that are created, in essence, one person at a time. We're not, we're talking about millions of homeless people. We're talking about a defined population. Many people in this room know many of them who are, who are dealing with this challenge on the streets of our community all the time already. And so, you know, dealing with homelessness, both in this context, but also as, as John, or as Juanita, or as the individual homeless people, that we can be connecting to, to appropriate services and to the appropriate housing and appropriate, appropriate... the appropriate services and to the appropriate housing and appropriate employment services, even if that is simply one at a time, that that will make it, that will make a significant dent in the challenge that we're facing. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, just a real quick question. I just, Louise, when we, we come back with this, I know there's, you know, I totally agree with Councilman Kristof on the budgetary issues here, but I'd like to see if we can maybe help articulate what the current cost is of police informers for homelessness, so we can, because I think if we pursue a plan of effectively using resources, we're going to be spending less in one part of the budget and maybe more with a coordinator. But I'm not sure, but I'd like to maybe at least some thought going in that, I know some of the articles that were in the report showed, you know, one person was going into emergency wards, it was like a million dollar a year cost for this person. So it's that kind of thing I'd like to look at, because there is going to be an offset, offset benefit to do this. It's not just, you know, we're going to hire a coordinator, and that's going to be an absolute 100% cost. I think there's going to be some cost recovery by not spending money elsewhere. If we can, if we can articulate that.
And Mayor, Council, if I could just clarify, I think it, we're on item 13 in the recommendations. And we'll come back and we'll, we'll further refine this for, at the November 6 meeting, but while Ms. Parnell's here in particular, and other county staff, it's our position that we, and Mr. Mayor, you've, you've stated very clearly, it's the staff position that we are not in the social services coordination business. We have many of these pieces that are our responsibility. We made it very clear, and, and Mr. Supervisor McGowan, who's probably watching this on TV, agreed that this is a county responsibility. We'll work with the county, we'll seek funding, we'll, we'll, we'll be very supportive of grant applications if there's other funding. But this is not a city budget item that we would recommend to, to the council that we fund, even a portion of a coordinator for a West Sacramento pilot program. That's clearly a county function, and we'll be supportive of that. So as we analyze, I think, cost savings through enforcement, we would not see that savings be directed to a coordinator. That's beyond our, that's beyond our, our responsibilities. We have, we have the impacts, and we're going to do all we can in enforcement, and Chief McDonald and Deputy Chief Stevens are here today, and they're continuing to work with the department on this. But, but in terms of coordinating social services, mental health, alcohol, other homeless services, that's the county responsibility. We really need the county to step up and not look at a countywide solution and wait for that, but work with us and set an example of what we can do in West Sacramento, and maybe some of the lessons that we do here can be applied in others, other communities in Yellow County. But I want to make it really clear, and we'll, we'll, we'll make it very clear in item 13, that this is not a city-funded-led effort. It has to be our partner in the county. We'll take responsibilities on many of the others, but on a coordinator role for services, that's the county's. And I don't think we want to give anybody the impression that the city is going to step up with its budget to begin to coordinate social services in West Sacramento.
So I would say the county, the, I mean, the county has, has cash strapped on its services in a very significant way. So it is, I mean, it is more than simply providing better connections to services that exist. There are also very severe limitations on the county's budget for providing, for providing the services. And, and to be very, you know, blunt, the cities in the county have not been that welcoming of, of delivering those services in, within our borders. And not just us, Woodland is in the same place, and, you know, Davis for the three people that they have, that, that, it just has, you know, it's, it's, I, I can appreciate for the county, you know, that, that they are now, they're, they're excited to see that the city is enthusiastic about engaging them, but it isn't as though we've been, you know, it's not as though we've been begging them to come and provide services on a, on a sustained, expanded basis, and they have said no. It's that they, you know, I think they've been waiting for this, for this moment as, as well. And certainly that's what Supervisor McGowan conveyed, and Mr. Blacklock, and I, and I know the whole team there is in the same position. Mr. Viegas?
Yeah, just, just if I could, just two quick points, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I wanted to just reiterate the earlier point that you made, which was to be, to, and I've said this before, and I, I continue to believe, that we ought to really make sure that we're focused in our efforts and not try to be everything to everybody. I think your point about trying to find where it is we can be more, most cost-effective, most efficient with the limited resources that we're going to have, rather than trying to be everything to everybody. It's not to say we deny services for those that want them, or those that are interested in trying to take advantage of the opportunity we're presenting, but I think we're going to be better served if we're more focused as we start, rather than trying to be everything to everybody. And, and to Mark's point earlier about, you know, the cost of, of the police calls, I think there ought to be some baseline data provided as it relates to the overall performance measures, if, if in fact, we are going to use that as a measuring stick for whether or not we've been successful year to year. And I know we're going to be doing the annual counts, we're going to be doing one, I guess, in January of 2015. So if that is in fact what we're going to use as we go through this, this multiple, over the course of several years, right? So if we're going to use this as a way to measure, we ought to have at least a starting baseline data for those things, and one of those might be the costs associated with them. That's a fair way to measure whether or not you're being effective. If you're spending 10 times more than you are two, three, four, five years from now, I think that's an element that ought to be factored in. So I think some baseline data, and I know we have it, we ought to start with using it as a way to measure whether or not we're successful, you know, 12, 24, 36 months from now.
Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, 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 Louise, I too would like to have some additional data. The mayor brought up a very good point with Project Christian Center, and that is, they may not be the only ones that could assist in providing some kind of a facility. I know that they put in for a grant, and there's, there's a lot of issues that are going on right now with the broader Christian Center, but it may not be the best one. And one of the things that I would like to know is, I'd like to know how many beds are in Rose Hill? How many beds are in Folsom? How many beds are in Woodland at Wayfair Center? Because I want to make sure that the facility, if there is a facility for, as far as West Sacramento is concerned, number one, fits the size of our community, and number two, because we're a small city, we're only 50,000 people. These other cities are a lot larger than we are. And the, the other part of that would be just, just to make sure that we're not creating something that is so large it becomes a, a magnet and becomes an attraction. So, I mean, there, there's a lot of issues, I think, that, that need to be feathered out as far as a facility is concerned. And so, I mean, you know, ingress and egress, and what, what's going to happen? So, but anyway, if, if you could get that information when you come back next time, I'd appreciate it.
My last comment's on the performance measures, I think, so the, and I think, we might be, we might benefit from some different terms. I mean, the performance metrics that are in the action plan are milestones of deliveries, deliverables, right? So that we adopted this, this policy, or this meeting happened, which is not the same as the, you know, sort of the overall performance of our strategy, the outcomes that we're driving towards, which for me is all, I mean, as the, for management, those individual milestones are, are key, I get that. But for us, the issue is going to be, are we actually achieving the outcomes that we're driving towards? So even if we have all the meetings, and we deploy all the services, and we have all the ordinances, if we're not actually achieving the overall performance measures, then, then we, we need to take a serious look about whether we continue to do that or not, do this, do this, this, this program again. So I, I think we do need to distinguish those. On the overall measures, to me, they at least fall into two tiers, and if we have a dash, a dashboard that reflects those metrics, those measures, they ought to emphasize it. To me, the tier one measures there are the police and code enforcement reports around homeless, homeless-related calls for services, and the camping sweeps that, whether, whether there's, we're called on them or not. Second is the fire department calls for services. Third is the parks and rec department cleanup costs. And the fourth is the data on the homeless count, so the, the hard quantitative numbers. The reports back from service providers and from, from, from the individual persons, those are, those are actually, I'm less, I'm, I'm interested in seeing those, but those don't actually, those don't swamp the measures around what the, what the impacts are that we're trying to, that we're trying to deal with. We obviously ought to be getting that information, but what I don't want to find out, you know, what, the dashboard should not tell us, you know, two years from now, we, we, our, our calls for, our, our police calls, our fire calls, our parks, they're all gone up, our costs have doubled, but service providers are reporting about that, you know, things are going great? That's not, that's not the point here. The point is to reduce, for the city. For the partnership, it's a barter set of, of measures. For the city itself, to me, those, those four areas are the, are the tier ones that should be, that really should be governing our dashboard. And I know for me at least, we holding, I'll be holding us collectively accountable for achieving those. All right. Have you gotten enough, Mr. City Manager, on the action plans for us to move to the...
I do. Do you, Louise?
All right, so then you've asked us to accept the final 2013 homeless update, so that requires a motion. Mr. Johansson moves, and...
It's a motion.
Mr. Viegas seconds to accept the 2013 homeless update, noting that the action plan itself will return to the council at a future date. All right, so, so no further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing done. That motion carries. Thank you. Thanks to everyone. All right, item 10 is an informational report on the West Sacramento flood program and port dredging. Mr. Faben?
I'm going to be short today. Good evening, Mayor Baldwin and council members. As you're probably aware by now, the new commander of the Sacramento District of the Army Corps of Engineers, Colonel Farrell, has requested a tour of the city's flood control project areas, as well as a tour of the port of West Sacramento. That tour has been scheduled for the afternoon of October 29th. And in advance of that visit, staff has prepared this report, this update, on some of the areas that will be presented to the colonel and, and that he'll be toured on. So I wanted to give a brief update to the council on, on where some of these projects stand. First is the South Port EIP, by far our largest early implementation project to date. It, it alone encompasses all of the previous implementation projects we've done, early implementation projects we've done previously, certainly by size and, and reach. That project is currently under design, advancing towards 90%, towards the first of the year, completion of 100% plans and specs next year. We have a unique situation, that opportunity really, in looking at the replacement for South River Road, that could go on top of the new levee, once it's built, but preferred to not. We're able to now move the replacement of South River Road to the, what we're calling the interim Village Parkway alignment, which is in alignment with the future Village Parkway as described by the general plan. And we're completing separate plans and specs for that portion of the project, as we expect that we're going to need to provide access to properties during the construction of the levy process, as well as relocation of utilities. That'd likely be the project, in terms of phasing, that portion of the project will probably roll out first. Recent milestone was, our official 408 request was approved by the Center Valley Flood Protection Board last month, that it starts the official process with the Corps for review of our project. Ultimately, we're looking for approval next year so we can begin, begin construction. With regards to the federal shutdown, it has affected Corps staff assigned to our project, so it has slowed things considerably while we're dealing with the, the shutdown issues. But we are working through some of our issues relative to the draft DIS, combined DIS/IR, and we're anticipating going for public release of that draft next month. And that really, right now, is our critical milestone to keep the project on track for construction next year. With regards to the general evaluation report, we're generally progressing on schedule. That schedule has been revised several times. We are now on a mission to complete that project by December of next year. It's the drop dead date for the Corps. We are on track. I think the, the other important milestone relative to, to the general evaluation report is the draft report scheduled for January of next year, and that's critical for us as far as being able to establish credit eligibility for our South Port project for future, future federal dollars. The federal shutdown is not affecting the work on the GRR, as they're using carryover money from previous budgets, so staff is fully engaged and continue to work to move that progress, that project forward. Wanted to provide a brief update on the Corps' SAC Bank setback levy project just south of the Barge Canal. That project has been stalled for some time, while the Corps and the, and their contractor work out some issues relative to a portion of the cutoff wall. Those issues have been resolved, and construction has resumed over a portion of about 600 linear feet of the project in the northern section. Contractor began work last week, and they should complete the work on the cutoff wall probably by the middle of next week. There's a period, break in, uh, break in period, but a, they have to wait the 21 days for everything to solidify and, and before they consider that portion of the project complete, they can move on. Everybody is working very hard, and we're working very closely with Corps staff to ensure that, try and ensure that project gets fully completed before the rainy season, which would include completing, resurfacing of South River Road on top of the new setback levy, and reopening that portion of South River Road to the public. Also, with regards to federal shutdown, it is not affecting that work as well. Works will continue to progress. And then for port, it, the real issues there relative to the Corps, the dredging activities. The channel depth is critical for the port to maintain its revenue base, as several of the main terminal leases relative to cargo require a 30-foot depth in the navigation channel. So annual maintenance dredging by the Corps needs to be performed in order to maintain that, that waterway at that depth. Dredging activities are limited to a four-month window because of fish habitat in the channel. And with the fact that the Corps coordinates our dredging in conjunction with Port of Stockton dredging, it's real critical that we work with the Corps to keep them coordinating so that the dredging can occur in a timely fashion and, and meet that window. That biological opinion is set to expire. It's a five-year, let me back up. There's a biological opinion that, that dictates that four-month window, and it was a five-year, it's a five-year term, and there's one year left. So over the course of the next year, staff is going to be working with the Corps as they renew that biological opinion so that we can continue maintenance dredging operations without, hopefully without any additional restrictions. And again, federal shutdown is not affecting the port dredging activities in there. As I understand it, that dredging activities are progressing and, and are nearing completion. And that is about all I had to update. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or...
That's it?
That's pretty much it.
Any questions? Yeah, that's a great update. Thanks. Appreciate it. All right. Yes, and, and we've all memed our desk with the logistics as we know them for the Colonel's tour on the 29th as well. Are you planning attending? Are you going to be there? Yes, everyone's going to be there.
I know.
Including, what are we called now? West Sacramento Flood? Not Safe?
Project.
No. That's it? West Sacramento?
No. West Sacramento, City of West Sacramento, West Sacramento Flood Project.
Oh, okay. All right.
Trying to brand it different.
Okay. All right, item 11 in this workshop, an update on Rayleigh Dock in Riceville. Peter? Mr. Sneed?
Good evening. On May 8, 2003, the city council awarded an engineering, design, and environmental permitting award to GHD, which is a consultant for the city. They're here tonight. A public meeting was also held on September 9th. GHD staff and a subconsultant for GHD, E-Corp, was there. What was presented was a background on the projects, the proposed project element, and the proposed project design. Attached to the staff report today was, was the comments from the public on, on that public meeting that was held. Also, along with the schedule, staff has received the 35% design drawings from GHD at this time, and reviewed them, and returned them, that we, staff received those on September 24th. The next milestone on this project is that we have to have the The next milestone on this project is that we have to have the 65% design plans complete and in to the state lands commission by the end of December to meet their permit requirements. It's still very early in the design process, so that's why we're here before you tonight. Staff would respectfully ask that City Council hear the presentation tonight by GHD on the design, on the proposed design elements and provide any comments and direction on the project. Tonight, we have Craig Lewis from GHD here for the presentation and we have their subconsultant ECorp here who is doing the environmental permitting side, CEQA and NEPA, so.
So I just wanted to go over the basis of the project. The basic objective is to reopen the Rayleigh docks. Also, the new facility will comply with all ADA accessibility requirements that applies to the walkways and gangways down to the new floating docks. The facility will be used by the public as well be used by small boats, water taxis, potentially dinner cruises, that type of vessel. And the idea is to provide temporary mooring for these vessels, there's no permanent, it's not a marina, there's no permanent moorage there. We'll provide dock and navigation lighting, they'll be lighting down the access walkways, the gangways and on the docks themselves, and then navigation lights at either end, the north and south end of the docks, again, to provide safety for mariners and boat traffic. The docks themselves, we're also considering the use of a debris deflector boom that is a fixed, actually a floating boom upstream of the dock to prevent floating logs and other debris that come down the river during the winter storm months and things like that will want to protect the city's investment there. We're considering, looking hard at the use of concrete floating docks. We think that they offer a better investment value in terms of durability and just low maintenance out there. Previously, there was timber docks out there, they require a lot of work and although the initial cost of concrete docks is higher, over the lifespan, they offer much better value, in our opinion. The objective also is to reuse the existing guide piles, the steel pipe piles that are in the river to the extent possible. There may be one or two cases where we have to relocate one or two to provide support for the new gangways. And also, there's one or two piles out there that are at kind of an skewed angle, those probably won't work for our new systems, we'll probably have to replace those. Also, the debris deflector I mentioned, that will probably require piles as well. So we may have to install some new piles. This is very hard to make out, but this photo, I think, dates back to 2011. You can see the configuration that was there before it was removed at the end of, or end of 2011, early 2012. What was out there was basically a 420-foot-long timber floating dock, as I mentioned. There was a two-gangway system and then a walkway above that, down from the top of the levee, down from Rayleigh's landing. The entire facility did not meet ADA requirements, there were safety issues and it was closed to the public at one point. And it's subsequently been removed and all you see out there are the existing guide piles. Again, these are just more photos of what was there dating back from 2011 before, those are the two gangways that were there. That's the birthing dock on the south end, is a wider section of dock that we are also proposing to replace. And that's a section, the large, the 370-foot-long floating section looking to the north. Those are the existing guide piles that I mentioned. Again, we've done an inspection of those piles, they're in relatively good condition considering they're 30 years old. Again, I think a lot of that has to do with the quality of steel that was put in in the first place and the fact that we're not in a salt marine environment has really protected the piles and kept them in condition, we feel we can reuse them. And there's another view just looking to the north, what was there. And then, again, you're not going to be able to make this out, but this isn't the 35% plan set that we delivered to the city, this is the proposed site plan as we see it. At the top, at the top of the levee coming down, there's an ADA accessible walkway. There are several switchbacks that you see, again, that's to meet the 1 and 12 slope requirements that ADA requires. Then there's a two-gangway system, similar to what was there before, adjustable gangways, again, to meet the ADA requirements. They're both going to be approximately 80 feet long. And then they'll have also a system of floating floats underneath the gangways, so when the river level rises to a flood stage, instead of becoming inundated, they'll basically float and be retained by the guide piles that are there. And then on the southern end, there's a 25-by-60-foot, 65, 25-by-60-foot float, concrete float that we're calling the birthing dock. The larger vessels will be able to moor, dock up there, more people will be able to get off and access the levee. To the north, there's an eight-foot-wide by 370-foot floating dock. Again, that just provides temporary moorage for boats to come along the river and also for people to walk down there and walk along the river. I'll move on along to the other project to the south, that's the Rice Mill Pier, it's an existing concrete and steel pier, I think that was built, originally constructed in the 1920s for rice shipping operations. We've done an inspection of that pier as well. The intent there is to reopen that for public use. And again, the pier itself is in generally good condition considering the industrial use, its previous use and its age. I think that's due to a lot of the construction methods that were used at that time. We feel that it's suitable for use, reuse as a public overlooked facility on the river. It will also comply with all building codes and accessibility requirements per ADA. There are a few structural repairs that are required, mostly cracked concrete, a few spalled concrete areas, some reinforced, and they'll have to be reinstalled, again, relatively minor work. There will also reinstall a handrail, a guardrail around the perimeter of the pier with lighting, light poles to illuminate the area. And we've provided a few photos, again, of the existing condition out there. You can see, this is looking out toward the river, it's quite an elevated platform, the dock, dock is about roughly 25 feet above the ground surface at the river. This is the entrance, the current entrance, there's a security gate around the perimeter, we'll remove that, obviously, to allow public access. That's another section showing from the river walkway, River Promenade, to the front of the pier, that'll be a new approach that we add there. Couple other views looking to the northeast, I believe. And one down from the river level looking up, again, you can see how high it is, how elevated it is. And also, there's quite a bit of river debris, logs and such that have come up against it over the years, we'll be removing that as part of the project, clearing that out. There's also quite a bit of vegetation there, that'll have to be removed too. And that's, that's out at the end of the pier, looking back toward land. And we're considering putting a new topping, concrete topping, maybe a textured concrete or colored concrete on top of that surface, just to refinish it. And this is a proposed, our proposed pier plan at the 35% level, design level. Again, you can see the walkway that I mentioned, or the approach that I mentioned, the perimeter guardrails, and we're also considering the use of a few, maybe a few benches, trash receptacles, and then the light poles that I mentioned. We're also trying to come up with a handrail or a guardrail detail that's vandal resistant, again, low maintenance, want to keep the maintenance requirements down. And that basically wraps up my short presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Are there questions? All right, did you need any particular direction from us? Mr. Kristoff?
John, I'm under the impression we are applying for a grant to do all this work?
John, if you, we have a large audience at home that can't hear you unless you come to the mic.
We have no funding for construction at this time, set aside. We are going to be applying, we have until April of next year to apply for the Department of Building and Waterways grant. So we are going to be applying for that, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've been talking about this forever, so it's kind of neat to see the, well, at least this phase of it sort of moving forward and being able to get our arms around conceptually what it might look like, so, good stuff.
Yep. And I think, maybe if we start referring to it as a visitor's dock, I mean, I think almost all the questions from the public meeting were scope question, folks who want to, you know, pump out sewage or connect to electricity or live there or whatever, and I think just being clear that this is not that kind, this is not, as you say, it's not a marina, and it is the simplest of the visitor docks that you could, that you can imagine because we want to, it's a way to get access to the bridges, not a location to spend the night. All right, all right, that brings us then to council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple items I wanted to point out on the calendar. On Tuesday, the 22nd, you should have, first of all, you should have a copy of a revised calendar at your, at the DS. On the 22nd, we're going to continue our meetings with the business committee on the active and secure, and the second, the second meeting will be held at Capitol Bowl at 8:45. I wanted to bring to the council's attention that the Oversight Board on the 23rd is going to be at noon, it's a change in time. The chamber's going to have their open house at their new location on the 24th at 4:30. They're calling it the big reveal, but it's the open house for their new location. And then finally, on next Friday, the 25th at 9:30 a.m., we're going to be having an event here at City Hall, this, in relation to our food hub, and there's going to be a special, a special announcement. You all should be getting an invitation, an electronic invitation tomorrow announcing that special event.
9:30?
9:30 a.m., yes.
With the event at, starts at 10?
10, right. Arrivals at 9:30.
I have 100 emails to go through, so I got you.
Hey, we need you on that one.
Yeah.
All right, any questions on the calendar? City manager reports?
Just briefly, Greg Faben did mention the Colonel's visit. If you could just make it at noon and meet the Colonel and then we can do, go on the tour, but that'd be great if you could make it on the 29th. I noticed Michelle Beltrano is still here, I don't think I've ever had an executive assistant who stayed for the entire board meeting or council meeting, so Michelle is the first. She's our new, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we saw the Parks Director do that one time too, and you haven't seen him since, so it's just.
That's true!
Right? You haven't seen him for years.
And also, in the parking lot, staff has worked with a firm called ChargePoint and the mayor on electric charging station. That is all activated on our end, we're waiting for ChargePoint to provide some software and looking at an event on, the latest, I think, is November 14th, so that, the signage will be there and that will be activated for folks to do electric vehicle charging.
Yeah, ChargePoint's donated the dual-port station to the city, so.
That's great.
Great. Any questions? City manager report? City attorney report? Staff direction from members of the council? We have no future agenda item requests, so Mr. Johansson moves and Mr. Kristoff seconds. Does the meeting adjourned? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.